I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And looking for motion to adopt the agenda.
You're gonna have to speak up, sorry.
Okay. We're called to order and I'm looking for a motion.
So move.
I'm moved to adopt the agenda as written.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So, we do have a couple changes, looks like we have more changes. We would like to remove Action Item 5G.
Yes.
Okay. And amend Action Item 5I to include the elementary music, elementary art, high school science, high school math, and special educator. Are there other adjustments to the agenda? Yes.
I mean, as an action item, if we're gonna appoint a director from Ferrisburg and we're going to do that today, and that person's gonna happen today, why wouldn't we do it beforehand, like right now, as our first order of business and have that person join us?
Well, I'm not sure they would've taken their oath.
Ah, good question. Okay, good, thank you, that's it.
I was going to suggest that we should have an executive session and discuss that before we go on it.
So you're suggesting we add an executive session to that action item? Where is it? I can read here, oh, E.
What would that be, what would be the...
It's personal matter.
Are we at a disadvantage?
Does it pose board or a person at a disadvantage?
I think we have to do it in public.
We're gonna take the action in public, but I think we oughta talk about it beforehand.
We have a recommendation from the Ferrisburg Select Board who did go into executive session to discuss the applicants? I guess. So what do you guys think?
I guess it's okay, I don't really know why we'd, I don't know why we would need it, and so I'm a little bit unclear about why we would need it. Do you think we should have it?
I do.
Okay.
If the other board did it, we can't be too wrong.
Alright, so do we wanna move that action item down to the end of the action items and have an executive just before it?
There you go.
Makes sense.
Alright, so let's move Action Item E to the end, which would be, I guess, I or J, however you wanna do that. With an executive session just prior.
Okay.
Yeah?
Do we need another vote for that, or can we just accept the agenda as amended?
I think we can accept the agenda as amended if people are in agreement with it. Yes.
I know, this is gonna sound really kind of obnoxious, but if you talk in that direction, either of you?
Yes.
I can't hear anything.
Same over here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really...
Come on up.
Okay.
It's just the acoustics in here, it's not your fault so much.
Sorry, I want you to be able to hear. I will try, I will try my teacher voice, as Rose calls it.
More or less the direction that the voice goes.
Okay.
If you turn your head that way, your voice goes that way, and it doesn't come over here.
So did you hear the discussion about an executive session?
Sort of.
Okay. Any more discussion about the agenda?
So, one of the things I remember hearing, and then I don't have a perfect memory, but I thought I remembered, that the auditor said we should be accepting the donations, and I see that there's a donation. And the reason I remember it is because we haven't ever accepted the donations that we get at all the games, and so that just sort of stuck in my head. And I wondered if we should just err on the side and put a motion on there to adopt, to accept the contributions. Contribution.
Action Item K, accept contributions from...
Women of Wisdom.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Oof, okay.
So, maybe someday we could have this like a lie of documents, so that we could see it change, people that are using, anyway, long, you know, someday.
Yes, but I don't know if we can amend it after it's posted, 24 hours before, but we can look into that. Okay, so all in favor of adopting, of accepting the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we made it through that one. Public communication. Alright, Board Education, we have our legislators here for conversation about legislative updates. You guys, do you wanna just share? So, I think that is just for the recording.
Oh, that's just recorded?
Yeah, that's for the RETN. You can come up or stay, wherever you would like to be.
Okay, whatever, I'll just go. Hi, everyone, thank you for having me, I'm State Senator Ruth Hardy, and I'm here with, you guys wanna meet each other?
Sure, Representative Matt Hartman, Representative Diane Lanford.
And I'm gonna take the lead, 'cause I serve on the Senate Education Committee, and then state senate filling on anything I might have missed, if I have that. So I serve on the Senate Agriculture Committee, but also the Senate Education Committee, which is more relevant to all of you, but I'm happy to answer your questions about agriculture. So I believe that you would just like an update on what's been going on in the legislature related to education, is that what your preference is, and then you can ask me about whatever you want. So, the first bill that we worked on and actually became Act One of this session is a bill on ethnic and cultural studies. It was a bill that started last year in the legislature, and it did quite get to the finish line, so both Education Committees in the House and the Senate were prepared to work on it, and it creates a statewide task force to look at state standards and policy across the state to make sure that our schools are inclusive of all students, and faculty and staff also. And especially to make sure that we're being inclusive of students of color, students from traditionally marginalized groups, including LTPQ students. So I think it's a bill that will, it's now Act One of the session, and will work over the next couple of years, this task force that was created by Ethnic Studies Coalition, which is a group of concerned parents and advocates and students around the state that will take a look at state standards and make recommendations to both the state legislature and the state board of education. So it may not go down to states, to school boards, but it will be a couple of years. So that's sort of in the works, and they'll be appointing people to that working group soon. So if anybody's particularly interested in that, I can connect you with people who are working on that. There will be two students on the coalition, on the working group, that was actually something that I advocated for, so I'm pretty happy about that. So that was, that's Act One. The second bill that the Senate worked on and is now over in the House is a bill about testing water taps for lead. As you probably know, there was a pilot program that tested the water taps in 16 school districts across the state, and in all of those school districts, they found water taps that were above the federal standard for lead in drinking water. So that caused enough concern that we introduced a bill early in the session that we worked on it right away to ensure that our drinking water is safe for students and faculty and staff at schools.
Just to assure everyone, we went ahead and tested all of ours, and we have no lead in any of our schools' water.
I was gonna say, the standards, I do wanna make sure that you know this, that the standards may come out different than what you tested to Sheila, so just wanna make sure that you and I check in, or you check in with some of the couples.
Ours were really low, they were all like under one.
They're below three, okay, so hopefully when the bill is done, it will be at three, which is what, at three parts per billion, which is, the federal standard is 15 parts per billion, and that is a 27-year-old standard, and it's really, really quite high. So we were trying to get down to a much lower standard, the health-based standard is actually one part per billion, so that's actually the goal that we should all be working toward, but three was the compromise we made on the Senate side, the House, I believe, is at five right now, we'll see if they end up there. And it created a, you know, pretty strict methodology for testing that was actually, we got some really great expert testimony from a Middlebury College professor, Molly DeSantis Robinson, who does this, this is what she does. So anyways, with that bill, we're even getting through, and hopefully we'll be finished by the end of the session, yeah.
You're gonna have funding in that?
Yes, so there's funding, it will pay for the testing of all the taps in all the schools around the state, including independent schools and also childcare centers.
So, because we already did ours, will we get rebated?
I don't know where that provision is at this point, I don't think you will, because you've already done it, but I'm not positive where that provision is, I can check and get back to your superintendent.
Thank you.
The testing isn't actually that expensive, yeah, so. The bill also has to include a state match for any, any...
Remediation?
Thank you, that's the rose, thank you. For any remediation that's required, most schools, remediation is just changing out taps, it's not actually really expensive, in some cases it would get into the plumbing, but mostly it's just changing taps, because there's actually lead solder in older taps. So that's that bill. The next thing we worked on, and I know I heard from several of you on this issue, and I'm happy to take your questions and tell you where we're at, was H-39, which is a bill about delaying implementation, or the quote-unquote forced mergers under Act 46 that the state board of education mandated as of last November. So, you probably are all up on this, but last November, the state board of education was given a file, 40 to 50 school districts that had not yet merged and made a determination on if and with whom they should merge. Some of those were required to merge with the sort of partner that they had been negotiating with but couldn't quite come to an agreement, some of them were required to merge in a completely different direction, some of them were allowed to not merge, but many of them were not happy with that outcome, and I think it was 36 school districts sued the state, so there is a pending lawsuit on that. We heard testimony from a lot of school districts, that it started, the bill started in the House, and the House came up with a sort of interesting methodology of giving delays for some school districts and not other school districts. It was not clear to the Senate exactly how they determined that, so we came up with a different methodology, which was allowing a delay for any school district, as long as they created their initial board and then voted to ask for a delay. So we required them to start down the path of merging, and if they wanted to, if they did not start down the path of merging, they were not allowed, they would not be allowed to delay. So that was, in fact, we took just last Friday, the House and the Senate created Conference Committee, and so I, they were, when I left on Friday, they were conferencing to try to figure out which direction they would go, so I don't know, I'll find out tomorrow if, what's going on with that. So, that's where, I'm happy to answer any questions, 'cause I know that some of you were really concerned about this. I appreciated that you all reached out to me, I really did. Go ahead, John.
Well, I'm just, I'm just speaking for me, I mean, I don't think any of those delays do anything for the Addison Northwest School District. I mean, that's my view. And I think it muddies the water for the process that we need to go to, and that's the hard conversations of, how do we deal with declining enrollment and tax pressures, and those are like really hard conversations, and just saying like, "Oh, you can wait to have that conversation because you didn't wanna do it," just kind of frustrating to me.
Yeah, no, I hear you, and as many of you know, I chaired our Act 46 Committee down in Addison Central School District, and have been a supporter of the work that your school district, my school district, other school districts have done around the state to merge under Act 46, and I'm really excited to be talking to your merge board. So, I, what I, for, and the vast majority of school districts have already merged, are already under new governance structure, so these are the sort of last holdouts, or last ones that couldn't get something to work in their district. And even though I'm a very big supporter of Act 46, I did hear compelling testimony from many of these school districts that thought they were going in one direction, and then the state board said, "No, you're gonna go in this direction," and that was at the end of November, and now they're trying to get community support for going this direction, when they thought they were gonna go this direction. And you all know how difficult it is to get community support around a new governance structure. So I felt that their testimony was compelling, that they really needed to lay the groundwork to make sure they were going to do it right. There were also, there are also a few districts who are doing sort of a dual track, Stowe is the most, is the best example, they would prefer not to merge, but they also know that they probably, depending on how the court case goes, will have to merge, and so they're doing, going along the track of, if we don't have to merge, and if we do have to merge, they actually have dual budgets, they have dual boards, they got special permission from the Attorney General, it's a huge amount of work. Exactly, I see you nodding, shaking your head too, and I'm like, "Oh my gosh, it's an amazing amount of work," but they are in so many ways doing the right thing, they're sort of covering both bases, they're being really thoughtful about it, they came and gave very compelling testimony about, "Please let us have this play out until the court case is decided." So, for those of you who don't know, there was a, you know, a court case by 36 districts, and then there's a separate one by a couple extra districts. The judge ruled in the larger court case, a sort of preliminary ruling, that really looks like he's gonna rule for the state in the end, and sort of piecemeal shot down each of their arguments for why they shouldn't have to merge. But it hasn't come to a final decision, so in part, the delay will allow school districts to wait and see what happens, and then just know that this is the reality that they have to live with. I can't speak for my colleagues in the House, but in the Senate, we are pretty adamant that this is it, we're not delaying anymore, this is a one-year delay, and then we're done. So, the state board, and that, we have a map in our room of all the, in our committee room, of the districts, and we believe, and our chair in particular, Senator Baruth, is really adamant, this is state law right now, this map. The only thing we're doing is allowing some districts to wait to do the community work that they need to do, so. Okay, so then, we have done a few higher educa, sorry.
I was gonna, I was gonna do the House side.
Oh, okay, on H-39?
And 40, and three, I think we're good on, but only when you're ready.
Okay. So, let me see, we did some higher education bills that I'm happy to talk about, but they're not directly relevant to your work, and we are right now taking testimony and working on sort of a miscellaneous special education bill, that the one thing is mostly a sort of technical change that will bring us up into compliance with federal law, because there's a Special Education Advisory Council that apparently, we were out of compliance for like over a decade, and didn't have the right members on, and somebody just discovered it last year, so we are coming up into compliance with federal law to make sure that we're all good with that. So that's part of it, and then, some of you may have read that there's, that the, the, what is it called, the census-based funding, I'm looking at you, what is that?
The 173.
Yeah, the 173 census-based funding council is potentially gonna ask officially for a delay of implementation of the new special education law. So we're taking testimony on that this week to see if indeed a delay is necessary, so delay is all over the place. It just shows you how hard the work is that you do, because it takes longer than everybody thinks. So that's one thing on the horizon, I don't have a definitive answer on that, but that's what we're talking about this week. I don't think there's gonna be any other major education stuff this year beyond that, unless there are things that I don't know about on the House side.
What about the statewide healthcare?
Oh, the teachers, the teachers, so that started the negotiations, I believe start like now, they were trying to get both negotiating teams in place, they did come, the one side, I think it was the teachers and the A-side, came and asked for some changes, asked the legislature to make some changes, and we said no, because it was sort of in the middle of it happening, and that we would take a look at it next year after the first negotiation session to see how things went, and if changes are necessary to the bargaining process. But we felt like it was a little unfair to change the rules of the game just as the game was starting, so I don't have any updates beyond that, I think they are really just getting started this week with that work. Yeah?
It's also my understanding that with this miscellaneous education bill, that there is some verbiage being brought up to be added potentially or changed in that education bill regarding the delay of the United, the Uniform Chart of Accounts and the implementation of Power School in the school district finance offices.
That I have not heard, yeah.
So that is being diced around between the Vermont Business Officials Association, and Nicole Mace is involved with them, and writing something up, so I think that's coming your way, I was just gonna ask if you had heard anything about any of that.
Okay, thank you for that heads up. I see Nicole every single day, and she has not mentioned this yet to me.
Maybe it's 'cause our stuff hasn't completely made its way to her officially, they're talking on the telephone and such.
Yeah, they may have talked about it to the House Education Committee and not us.
They're trying to figure out what, yes, the House ad, and they're trying to figure out what kind of terminology they use to present this.
Another delay.
Yeah, another, two other delays.
Sorry to interrupt your information.
It's the Unified Chart of Accounts, it started like five years ago.
Yeah.
It's with UVM, and it's been continuing, and there's some chugging along, and they're still financing for it, so it's still in the big bill, and I haven't heard that, it's still happening, yes, but the timing keeps moving around, all around the board.
And I think one of the issues that's a little clear is that the Agency of Education is having a really hard time with various things. I don't wanna say too much, but they're having staffing issues, and this is how, this is not making these types of projects easy, whether it's implementing a new special education law or a new chart of accounts, so this is a theme that's become extremely clear to me in my, now, I think this is my 15th week, so, yeah.
So you're a veteran.
I'm still counting by weeks.
I'm still counting by weeks, yeah, it's like I'm, no, I won't say what I was just about to say.
Just a comment and a request.
Sure.
A, you know, a bill doesn't have to be education-focused or come through the Education Committee to have a, could, you know, potentially have a pretty significant impact on the schools. For example, it's my understanding that we are now going to be required, because the high school has more than three acres of impervious surface, to rebuild our wastewater, our stormwater retention pond, which was gonna cost, what, estimated $170,000? Something like that? So, you know, when you're voting on bills, you know, that's $170,000 that we don't have, that's $170,000 that's gonna have to come out of somewhere, and it's going to hurt the kids, is the bottom line, so, I mean, unless we can find funding for that.
You should be able to apply for the grant through the, you should be able to.
We missed one deadline so far, and so we don't know, you know, is there an unlimited amount of money for grants, are we guaranteed?
Well, maybe not every year, yes, there's about $39 million in this year's budget for all types of water, including we haven't funded, I should, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, Diane Lanford, House Rep, serve on House Appropriations Committee, and I get a nice view of a smattering of just about everything, I don't maybe get down into as deep of the weeds as the committees of jurisdiction, but we are in pretty much step with them, and would, as we approach this, is at the two-thirds part of the session. So we're still in the midst of, you heard the Senator talk about the first bill, the Ethics H-3, which is now Act One, all the way through, funding for that study, came through on the BAA piece, all the way through, the other two bills, H, or S-40, the lead bill, came over and is in a bit of a flux at the moment, between trying to figure out when we got it, where the number is, considering that bottled water is five, and if actionable is at three, so there's a little bit of negotiations around that with the Senate, and they're probably in committee of conference around that, and the funding for that, I have been, or not me, but our committee had been holding and have in the big bill, $2.5 million in reserve or on hold for S-40, the bill. So we're hearing, it might cost more, it might cost less, but that's what we're holding right now, I mean, I'd love it if it cost less, but we're also hearing that it's probably gonna probably cost more, depending on what we do. We're getting some discussions, there was a Superintendent's Association and other associations who would love to see it at 100%, we may end up coming to a term of 70/30, because that's what a school construction relationship would've been like. I think from, I can say that from the House position and from House Appropriations, we're very concerned about leaving the door wide open and a blank check out there, that we will do everything and anything that's found, I think we're very comfortable about wanting to be working partners, put the 2.5 out there for testing and to a level of mitigation, let's see where we are statewide at that point, and if things need more, then let's take a look at the more and where we're gonna go with that. I'm not particularly comfortable having it, having that tax dollar door totally open. On the water piece, I would and should hear from you guys, and we should all hear from you, to see, to provide you with the information on the grants, for the Clean Water Fund.
I think we're not quite ready to move for some other reasons.
Which is what a lot of people, like even the city of Virgin, which Mark is here, but, you know, there's, you know, people say, they've taken steps, they've got grants, they're not ready for, to take $100,000 or a couple, you know, $2 million piece, because it's not there yet, but I think you bring up a very good point, those are exactly what that help, and those dollars are there for, is to help get to where we need to be with clean water and helping with some green infrastructure. On, I think it was the other, oh, the school merger delays, I think that one started in the House, and the lead there, and then we ended up switching, so, I'm not on that committee, but we do work with them, that they took a look at and went and worked with every one of the districts that was in conflict around it, and trying to figure out who was truly in need of a delay and some that weren't, and so that's where that kind of division came up with. So that's still in flux at this point, I guess that we're at two-thirds of the way through, and we measure it by our pages that come, there are three six-week sessions when the pages are with us, and we just said goodbye last Friday to the second group, which means the last six-week group is in, and for, especially for me, having the House budget now over into the Senate, the heaviest and most intense January and February and most of March for me is now lifted, and just as it gets a little brighter outside in spring, it gets to move on, and it was, it was not as contentious as it has been in the last few years, but there's some big, big issues, and I can, wasn't on your radar that you spoke about it here, but the childcare bill, I was one of the lead sponsors on that, and I know Ruth and the Senate, and we're very, very pleased, or at least on the House side, I know the Senate is still looking at it there, but of where that landed and the money for that is in the big bill, is already, there's an $8 million investment, and it is just next year's, it's a five-year plan that will, that will need progressive, more and more investment. So that is, I think, a really big thing that we've gotten done this year. So that is, I think, a really big thing that we've gotten done this year. Looking around this room, because I used to work in here for many, many, many years, and so it's kind of a really nostalgic place for me and I know Thundercats, right, are there and Thunder Care. So the question for me is all the work that we do in this bill and the childcare bill should have an impact there. The, I got to tell you that the opiate issue, we've got an opiate issue, but right now our Attorney General is signed on to taking on the pharma issue.
Yes.
And we're one of the states. And I'm not going to count my chickens before they're hatched, but there is actually some other funding that's come in from settlement that I'm hoping and earmarking for prevention, which means after-school. So I'm a strong supporter of the after-school work and opportunities around that and seeing what can be brought in that direction. I want to hear from you guys as to what are this body, what would you like us to be working on next? We don't have the merger issue, but we have the opportunity to go to the next level.
I have actually one more bill that I wanted to mention, if that's okay, and then we'll... So there is a bill that's actually crossing my two committees. It's H79, which is a farm-to-school bill, and it's a, it's a bill that, just a little farm-to-school grant program that provides little grants to school districts that are trying to create better relationships with farmers and like school gardens and local foods initiatives. I don't know if any in your district have gotten them before.
Oh, you're here.
Yes. So I actually had lunch with Kathy over at Mount Abe today and it was great. And I'm hoping to add some stuff to that bill that's more directed specifically to school lunch program, hopefully increasing the state match to school lunch and school breakfast and also summer lunch programs. So I'm hoping, fingers crossed, that I can get that through. It will be a small amount of money, but hopefully it will help a little bit and move toward more local foods in schools, more, move toward universal school lunch, which is my ultimate hope and I know that you share that. And I use you and your district and the Addison, the Mount Abe, it's now called Mount Abe District, as models in the state and talk about what great stuff you're doing here. So helping, anything I can do to help you move toward universal school lunch would be fabulous. So hopefully that will at least be a small step if I can get that across the finish line this session. So that's the last one, but go ahead.
Just anything that you do over there, please try to keep in mind that you need to provide funding along with mandates. This unfunded mandates is killing us. And you folks have the power of the purse there. Now, there's, I know there's a lot of other people pulling on it, but if you're going to make us do it, fund it. Please.
Are you talking about something specific or just a generic statement?
Just in general. We get...
Universal preschool.
Yeah.
Yeah, so universal preschool is not coming up this session, but probably will come up next session. And so definitely keep in touch about that one.
I was going to say, we've asked because we're trying to become and want to become more sensitive around, you know, because every two years so much of the legislature changes. And I got to tell you, very, very grateful with the influx of new legislators and two of them are actually here.
You had to say that.
It really, no.
She means it.
They are bringing in that new, fresh oxygen into the room, but on the other hand, so I get to be the old, I get to be the old senior person, is to remind us that, okay, that we may have done a lot in the past already around unfunded mandates. So we've actually asked for, can somebody get us a list? Our JFO and our staff are top-notch in the whole country and we're just very, very lucky to have them. But to come up with a list, show us the list of unfunded mandates that are happening that are out there, or even things that we're underfunding, because as we're looking at, you know, the education fund is really solid on our end at the moment. And I got to tell you, it's very attractive to other people who will say, look, you know, with that Wayfair bump, we had to, you know, there was a proposal at the beginning of the year to take that money to put it to childcare, which me, we were all, know that is education money. One-hundred percent of the sales tax goes to the education fund. And because the Wayfair decision in the summer was very, very favorable and probably put about twenty million dollars between that and a few other pieces, that whole level up is there, that statewide, and I should have brought the sheet with me, that statewide the rates are pretty flat, if any kind of increase, even within the world that we've been, I know that our district here, but you guys have done the hard work in the past, like say four, three, two, one, you know, and you've had a long history of just about flat budgeting and this year, well, it catches up, just like at the state, it catches up. And there's a bit of an up, but when you look at it overall, we are, like the Senator said, an absolute model and we're very, very proud of our community and our school boards. And I'm not just saying it because it's here, but you really are good. Good, and we're very, very pleased to be able to represent this group. Because I live to hear other communities and what they go through and the fact that at least Representative Brong and I, we get to represent all one district.
Right.
The Senator, I know you've got a lot, but I'm grateful for the fact that I don't have three superintendents and, you know, different school districts, that it's one voice that we can bring and I'm grateful.
Well, we are grateful to you as well. Thank you.
She's the dean of our delegation.
But I have a couple of questions or comments. Chris Bray also followed up with me by email. He couldn't be here, but he did want to remind us all about the conversation that we had last year when you came about potential ways of, and I don't know, he actually called it chart of accounts. I don't know if perhaps it might feed into the new chart of accounts, but a way to track core education dollars versus health and social services, just as a reminder. And what about capital construction?
So there are a couple of bills, were you about to...
No, I was just going on the capital bill. There's a lot of buzz around, are we at the point now, because when I come in, we were so far behind that we were going to have to not take on anymore until we got caught up. Well, it's caught up. So the question is, do, what's the role now to start back up again? What does it look like? What does it involve?
So I think, I know our district and probably others, we may be looking at needing to repurpose buildings or move things or, you know, post-ACT46 merger, there may be some need for funding around renovations.
Yep.
Yep.
So there are a couple of bills right now on the House side that are related to this and have different sort of perspectives on the issue, whether it's new construction or renovated construction. They will not be taken up this year. I don't think there's going to be time or appetite for it, but next year I believe that they will come up. I actually am interested in working on that. I was, the reason I was at Mount Abe today was not only to have lunch, but also to tour their building because they have a particularly challenging situation with their high school. I think you guys are luckier than they are in that respect or whatever you've done. I don't know. I don't want to make any judgment calls, but you have a nice high school. So anyway, but I think there are districts around the state that have issues and especially as schools move around with the new governance structure, that will become an increasing issue. And also frankly, all of our conversations about climate change and weatherization and, you know, fuel efficiency and all that come into play too when you talk about how many school buildings we have across the state. So I think it will be something that comes up early next year.
Have we switched to gas?
Yes, the Virgin's buildings did.
High school and VUES.
Just the two.
Yeah. Does anyone have anything else? I also just want to say that I know we have a number of high school students that are going to be walking to Mount Pelear tomorrow.
Oh, yes, yeah.
You may see them.
Yeah, that's great.
So I can introduce, Una is here. She's Girls Rock. Yeah, she is with me once a month to shadow me for the day and she gets to see what my day is really like, which is...
Ooh, that's awesome.
...ever with me. And everyone, everyone is just impressed. And when they say she's ninth grade...
She wants to be, she wants to be a school board rep too. No, she really does.
I couldn't have been prouder because the day we were, it was at lunch and I had to meet with some advocates and she was, so Secretary French was just moving cafeteria and I went, oh, go and introduce you. And without missing the beach, she was so onto it, she was so good, so...
That does not surprise me one bit, but it's wonderful to hear.
No, and I just heard, and I will stop and stop talking, but, and if you don't mind, because I'm going to drive over to Mount Pelear, so when we're done, if it's okay...
Yeah, oh, please.
I was going to get cars loaded, get over there for the morning.
You guys have a lot of things to get back to, but does anyone else have anything else they want to ask about before?
I have one more comment. I mean, I understand the things about delay and I heard you say, we're going to maybe pick something up next year, but we cannot wait. We have a, but we have already in discussions about our budget for next year and it is really tough to not make deep cuts into programs and not, or have a gigantic tax rate. Neither one of these are palatable. And right now, I feel like we're doing it all by ourselves and we're not getting any help up there. We desperately need some thinking on top to help these kinds of conversations and the things that we're going to have to do. Please keep that in mind.
So what specifically, John?
Like, I echo what Sue was talking about, costs for reorganizations.
Yes.
Costs and incentives to families and communities where possibly a school may close and they may, they may have to travel more, right? Where's the carrot for them to say, oh, it's not just pain that I'm going to suffer in this, right? ACT46 had a, had pretty good carrot there, right, with the tax incentives. I'm asking for something like that. We need something like that.
I know that we've all had conversations and I've had conversations with the agency and the secretary and some of the people there to see about what and how can we get some assistance for, our district is ready to move on in the next step. And there's so much of the state is still, not so much, but enough that really causes a lot of friction and the attention is there, that, but I would like us to be able to see about getting the funding for what we need to go to the next step. Because we know, as you know, more than anybody, we sit in that room alone and we deal, like on your level, but I have a lot of committees help with it, dealing with tough budget issues. And for every dollar I have, there's about a hundred dollars worth to ask and most of my day is telling people is disappointing. And the hardest decision is to figure out where is the best investment for that one dollar? And if something should happen and not get done, what hits me isn't that, but it's what was left on the floor, what could have been done with that dollar that is now not being used in a particular direction. So I would like to, and I'm sure we want, we want to see you get the help that you need and the assistance that you need to take a look at so the next budgets, you want to think down the line, three years down the line, four years down the line. Where do we want to be as a community? And this is where getting you the help that you need to have the conversations within the community, which are tough talks, because it seems like we just did it, but it's not and change is happening faster and faster to get there and to get ahead of it. And you're right, transportation is a big issue and where do, where do we go from here?
Are you part of it? Are you doing, I know that at Mount Abe they are and down in ACSD are doing like huge community conversation planning. Are you...
We started that, we did that some this fall and we have a strategic planning committee of the board grappling with some of the issues, just in terms of queuing up the work for the board to carry it the next step.
Because having a sort of understanding of where you think you might want to go is helpful to, for, to me and to us to know what kind of assistance you might need, if it's construction assistance, if it's transportation, if it's, even if it's just language, incentive language, whatever it is you need, but if we don't know where you're going, it's hard to craft, you know, assistance around that. I mean, I think a lot of what we, post-ACT46, after having been through that process myself, a lot of it was, we need time to take a deep breath and figure out where we're going from here. And so maybe you've taken that deep breath and you need to figure out where you're going. And I don't think we, now that I'm at the state level, want to be telling you where to be going. We need to be hearing from you where you need help going, if that...
We will keep you in the loop.
There's one other bill that we just, the House just got, maybe you know a little bit, is S40, I think it's 41, is, there's something in there on the third party, somebody had mentioned here about the healthcare piece. Still hearing that people are, teachers are still having issues with being able to get their claims paid. Because that was a disaster by the third-party administrator, which then really made everything else look very bad for V-Hive. That's gone. There's language, I guess, in S41 to hold the third-party administrator.
It's forward-looking, it's not backward-looking.
Not backward.
It's basically like the disaster you all had to live through. We're trying to make it so other people don't have to live through a similar disaster.
I think it would be important for us to know how many people within the district are still so far out of pocket with...
Multiple.
Multiple, yeah.
If we can get you that...
And then much like what George said about, well, you've already tested your lead and do we, do we help you out? Well, that's a fair question. So what we did with some of them were, you know, we tried to take a look at it and see if we can be good players. Is it possible? I would say save the receipts.
Sure.
And make sure you know what you spent and who knows what's possible, but you won't know unless you actually have it ready. And then I think it would be important for us to figure out maybe, is there, I'm not saying there can be, but is there actionable opportunities around what happened to the people around their healthcare? Because that was not well done. Okay. Should we go?
Thank you. Very much. Appreciate it.
You can invite us and then we'll talk forever.
It's good to hear though. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us. I'm going to stay for the next two things because I'm interested, so.
You're more than welcome to stay. Come, come in. All right, so Steph, you're up with proficiency-based learning.
In the meantime, I'm going to, I have a home for you. If you could just...
Steph, you want to explain why you look like a rock star or...
Yeah, that's the next thing. I'm actually, my right eye...
Thought you just didn't want to look at us.
None of these, just one eye dilated, so I'm feeling a little off balance, but it's really, really bright because it's like, so I'm going to try and, in the minute of taking the sunglasses off, but if I'm not...
Can I help you in...
And I'm leaping, because my eye's leaping. That is...
Do you want some help there?
You have a learning scale, right, and you, well, I'm setting up, I would like you to just make a little mark to yourself about where you think you want to write in, in terms of... And I'm going to, I have a presentation, so the people, you may all need to, I need to... And the other thing I'm going to do in something you're not, you won't expect from me because I hardly ever go from a script because I've been thinking and talking about this stuff for so long and it's easy for me to talk to, but if there's one thing I've learned over the last couple of months is the importance of clear and concise communication. So I'm going to go from a script because there are a lot of points here that I want to make and I want to make sure that I hit them. So I'm going to talk to you about proficiency-based learning today. It is an element of what we're calling personalized learning. And personalized learning is the overarching umbrella category that we talk about and it takes all the elements from ACT77 and really applies them to a high school and education for students. Proficiency-based learning is just one piece of that and you'll hear it referred to in many different ways and I'll probably use these terms interchangeably at different times during this presentation. You might hear standards, you might hear proficiencies, you might hear competencies... you might hear competencies, if you're from some of our neighboring states. And in this case, it all means the same. We're aligning learning to a set of standards or proficiencies or competencies, and that those are clearly identified areas of learning that we believe are necessary for students. So is that clear? And proficiency also means we want students to be proficient in these standards, so it kind of has a dual meaning. So this is from the definition, the definitions in the educational quality standards. The educational quality standards is actually the rules that were passed by the State Board of Education following Act 77. Act 77 is, again, is the law that put in place flexible pathways and a lot of other elements. So when, there was a kind of a Vermont digger followed some of the controversy recently and they said, you know, it never really mentions proficiency in Act 77. That's true, it doesn't. It mentions it in the educational quality standard. But educational quality standards are the rules that dictate how we deliver education to students in the law. So I'll let you read that. But what's important here is kind of a last part where it says that students are expected to learn before they progress to the next lesson, get promoted to the next grade level, or receive a diploma. So we're not just passing students with a seven. We have, we are charged with making sure they are proficient in the areas that we have identified and that the standards that we follow have identified. I'm already off-script, geez. So what is proficiency-based learning? A working definition is that proficiency-based learning is a system of instruction, assessment, grading, and reporting that is based on students demonstrating that they have acquired the knowledge and skills they are expected to learn as they progress through their education. In a proficiency-based system, our teaching is ident, is based on identified core content proficiencies that are aligned with national standards, such as the Common Core, NGSS, or the C-3 standards, as well as a set of skills, such as problem-solving, critical thinking, communication, and collaborating. These skills need to be taught and practiced, just like content skills. How we teach? We use brain-based strategies to support students as they learn and practice content, to emphasize the process of learning, and not just the end goal of a score, while recognizing that students learn at different rates and come to us with different skills. And we are measuring learning differently. Within a proficiency-based system, assignments, tests, quizzes, and other learning activities are designed to measure the proficiency we are teaching. Becoming proficient in the standard is what is important and not how long it took a student to get there. Students have multiple opportunities to show their understanding and they have the opportunity to show their learning in different ways. So this is a video. Should we do it? Seven minutes. I like that attitude.
What's the deal with proficiency-based learning?
Hi, my name's Annika, a Vermont High School student. You may have noticed there's a lot of buzz and activity around school change these days, with both teachers and students working to shift the current system to something that will improve learning and teaching even more. One main focus right now is proficiency-based learning, also known as PBL. It is a way to personalize learning and assessment, so that you can learn at your best pace and demonstrate your learning in different ways. All schools are transitioning to this system and all students will graduate based on proficiency by 2020. Now, I know many of you like the system the way it is, but once you understand how you can play a bigger role in shaping your education and monitoring your progress, it will become both more challenging and more fun.
Why change to proficiencies? Our rapidly changing world.
One reason we are changing to a proficiency-based system is because the world around us is changing. Schools are responding by redefining the ways we learn and how that learning is assessed. In order for us to be effective in whatever path we choose after graduation, we need to be truly prepared.
Grading doesn't tell the whole story.
Another part of why schools are moving towards proficiencies is that using only letter grades is a pretty limiting way to assess learning. Let's say you mess up early in the year and get a zero, like not handing in an assignment or bombing a big test. You can usually never get your grade back up, even if you figured out the material later on. In the old grading system, your final grade is based on an average of all assignments. In the new system, you get to keep working on something until you get it. So it more accurately reflects what you know and can do. Wouldn't you rather have your grade represent what you can actually do through this type of meaningful assessment? You see, what we sometimes call failure is simply another step in the learning process. Since proficiency systems don't penalize us for making mistakes along the way, we can take risks and learn more. After all, none of us knew how to ride a bike the first time we got on it, right?
Proficiencies match the way the brain learns.
We know each of us learns different subjects at different rates. Proficiency-based learning lets people advance through school at their own pace. I may be great in math and be able to pick up the pace in that subject, but I might need more time to master science. Proficiencies allow us to match our pace of learning in each subject. With more time, practice, feedback, and support, I can reach proficiency even in challenging subjects.
Proficiencies personalize learning.
Finally, proficiency-based learning is more personalized, so you can learn the content and demonstrate your learning in different ways, not just with tests and essay.
What are proficiencies?
Being proficient at something includes both knowledge and skills. Let's take, for example, driving a car. Not only does a licensed driver need to intellectually know and understand all the complexities of driving a car and the rules of the road, she also needs to apply that knowledge by actually driving. Proficiency-based learning is the same way. Not only do you need to know content in a subject, but you also need to know how to apply it. And usually it takes practice to really learn these skills, just like learning to parallel park. Almost, closer, got it. Here is an example of a proficiency in global citizenship. It reads, "I can propose solutions to local and world issues by using geographic tools to analyze data and examine cultural information." It's cool that it's written that way, because it's really specific about what I need to learn, figuring out how to use geographic tools and data to explore an issue in my town or the world that interests me. Maybe something like using GIS neighborhood information to coordinate recycling pickup so there are less trucks on the road. Then I can demonstrate my learning by presenting at a community meeting on how to reduce pollution. What I'm learning is clear, relevant, meaningful, and I have more say in how I get there. Proficiencies let us spend less time memorizing facts and more time doing active and applied learning. In this case, the learning equation looks like this. Knowledge equals identifying a world issue. Skills equals analyzing and using geographic tools to figure out a creative solution. Proficient equals presenting an evidence-based solution.
All brains grow.
We now know that intelligence is not fixed and that all brains can and do grow. In this sense, the way we learn is the same way we strengthen our muscles, with time, practice, feedback, and support. And everyone can get stronger physically and mentally. A proficiency system gives us the space to grow from where we start. So even if we hit a wall, we can pick ourselves up and keep going.
Transferable skills.
Finally, you might be hearing about transferable skills. They are the skills that serve us for life, like being able to communicate effectively, creatively solve problems, be self-directed, make a positive difference in our world, and be able to apply our thinking to many situations. Building these skills will ensure that we have many choices after graduation.
Grades in college.
Some people are concerned that not having a traditional report card will hurt their chances of getting into college. Well, the fact is that many colleges have already been looking at proficiency-based transcripts for years. When they see you have achieved proficiency in a subject, it tells them what content and skills you have actually mastered, rather than the vagueness of a grade. A proficiency-based transcript will also give a better picture of who you are by including things like career and technical courses, dual enrollment courses, internships, service learning, and independent studies. Some transcripts may include standardized test scores. Your school is somewhere on the journey towards adopting proficiencies. The road may be unfamiliar for a while, but we're all going to the same place. So be open, be flexible, stick with it. You'll discover that with proficiencies, school can be more empowering, meaningful, and relevant, and more in your control. Enjoy the ride!
I forgot to mention that that video was produced by students at another high school in the area that starts with an H. So as the video talked a little bit, there's a traditional system which we've been using for many years, or the proficiency-based grading system. The traditional system usually identified a single grade, produced a single grade for each class that comes from a mathematical calculation, that very often had no standardization from class to class or school to school, I mean definitely school to school, that is based on a combination of, and again, a calculation of scores from tests, quizzes, and homework assignments. A grade above a certain level meant that you passed the course, but it doesn't really give you much other information than that. So a useful analogy of this is the medical analogy. So you go to the doctor, you have a bunch of tests. They take your blood pressure, they take your pulse, you have your blood drawn, they listen to your lungs, they poke you, and then you get a report. You may get a scolding, you may get some advice on improvements that you need to make, like I did with my LDL, which is a little elevated right now. But you don't get this. And just like a single grade doesn't give you a lot of information about your medical health, this grade doesn't communicate a lot about where you are in terms of your learning. You might not have a problem with this grade if you're the student's parent, because on a 100-point scale, it's near the higher end. But what if you're the parent of a student who gets a 71? What does that tell you about what that student knows or doesn't know about the content in the class? That's one point over passing, so, you know, presumably they pass the course, which means they're ready to go on to the next level. But I'm not sure that that's really what that indicates. And what about the 29 points that that student get, didn't get? Is that 29% of the learning that they didn't master and is that 29% necessary? So this is a little chart that explains another problem with averaging grades. So seven different students with different grades on five units in the class, and the average grade for each is the same. But each case is different and each indicates something different for the students. Assuming students should improve over the course of the year, we need to be pretty concerned about student number five. Started out strong, but failed the last two units. The ending grade certainly doesn't reflect that. Student number six does pretty well generally, but what about the first unit test? And student number one is making significant progress throughout the course, but again, it's a 79 inaccurate reflection of their present learning. That final grade is often the only thing we see, we pay attention to in a traditional system, but it's not very informative and often misleading. That's why BUHS and the entire state of Vermont has decided to shift to a proficiency-based system. Oh, I'm not in presentation room anymore. Sorry about that. So this is something that's familiar to you, if you're a parent of a student here at BUHS. And I realize this is a little hard to see on the screen, but this is just a random student screenshot from Power Teacher. I copied it the other day. It's from a math class. And as you can see, it's a, it's a pretty good example of the lack of information that the Power School program allows us to give. So you've got mini quiz 4-3, you've got test chapter 3, you've got mini quiz 3-3, you've got mini quiz 2-3, and then you've got the score on the sign. But it doesn't give you any indication of what those quizzes are assessing or where that student is. And you know that on the front page, it had a, it reduced all this to a numerical calculation. So that student had, I don't know, maybe a running grade of 80-something. I don't remember. I didn't copy that page because it had the student's name on it. So, but, you know, you could see that this student here got an 80 on mini quiz 2-9, 70 on mini quiz 2-5, a 66 on mini quiz 2-2, and then for the chapter 2 test, they got a 72 out of 100. So they passed the chapter 2 test. But what didn't they get? And at the end of this, so each of the students', you know, chapter tests are okay, but is this student really prepared to go on to the next math course sequence? Or is there, is there important content that they missed? So what should grades communicate? We say, grades should communicate progress towards a learning goal. Progress towards, I'm sorry, progress towards clearly defined learning goals where students know and are able to do, what students know and are able to do within the content area, where a student needs additional work or support, and grades should provide an accurate, consistent, meaningful picture of your student's learning at any point in time. So this is the proficiency scale that the middle school adopted this year and the high school will be adopting next year and towards our grading. And you have an example of that in the learning scale that I handed out earlier during this presentation. This is basically just defines the different levels of proficiency. But the idea is that each level is clearly stated. It's not an arbitrary number on a scale. Each of the numbers is defined according to what it is the student should know and be able to do in that particular area. So it's not just a 2, because they're kind of close to 3. It's that the student will be assigned a 2, because we have to find what a level 2 is. So it's very clear. And it should be that those scales will be available through curriculum documents and standard and other class documents that parents get. So this is a screenshot from a present eighth grader's Jump Rope account. And again, I deleted any name, I hope I looked for it. So as an example, and just sort of a comparison to the Power School, you'll see that the scores are on that four-point scale, so 2.9, 3.0, 2.5, in a graph format, so it's very clear. And each of the areas that are being assessed are clearly defined. So in this case, the student got a 3 in understanding ordering and absolute value of rational numbers. Now, that student was probably assessed in that area a number of times. And you can see that because we're doing a four-point scale, but one of the scores is a 2.9. So it's obviously a calculation of a number, of a number of assessments for that. So I can create an accurate line graph. A student got a 2.5. And the number, oh, I'm sorry, the number system there, 2.9, is a calculation of those scores that fall under it. But it's very clear and very descriptive of exactly which area the student is doing well in and which area the student isn't doing well. And in this case, the student has a 1.5 in use proportional relationships to solve multi-step ratio and percent problems. So that's what a parent and a student will see through the Jump Rope system. So to summarize why proficiency-based learning, it allows students to understand the expectations for learning, have the ability to self-assess, and to know what they're good at and in what areas they can work to improve. Parents can see the expectations for learning, see what their child is good at, and where their child needs to apply themselves or get support to meet the learning goals. And the standards and evidence of student progress provide a clear path for teachers to help a student improve through assignments, practice, and assessments designed to measure the learning goals of a course. And where are we now? Middle school implemented this full-on this past year with Jump Rope. Jump Rope's been a little glitchy through, partly there transitioning away from a flash platform. platform, so they opted not to work on a couple of revisions that we requested them to do. And part of it is that the middle school did not want to summarize a course grade. They wanted the focus to be on those individual learning proficiencies, and not summarize a course, because if you just focus on the course grade, then there's the risk that you fail to look at what those standards and proficiencies are really telling you. And you'll just say, "Oh, you have a 2.5, or 3.2, or whatever." At the high school, we're moving to that as well, and Jump Rope will go into effect in the fall as our grading platform, and, you know, we'll move from there. So, this is a presentation that I've done, this is the third time, I think, in some way. I did it two years ago at Open House, I did it this past fall for the middle school with a little bit more specificity around middle school grading, and I'll do it with even more specificity for the high school parents as well. There's so many different stakeholders, and so many different opportunities to communicate, that I wanted to take this opportunity to really get back to the basics of why a proficiency-based learning and grading system is so important. So, all of you here, if you're watching, and your jam is at home, your parents hear it, and we'll do it again and again. But there's so many ways to approach this, that I thought starting again here would be good for all of you. I'd love for you to take a moment, well, first of all, you can ask me any questions that you have, but take a moment and look at that learning scale again, and see if you've maybe moved over a little to the right.
Thank you. Do folks have any questions for Stephanie?
Yeah, Lori.
No, you go. No, please, you go.
I feel like I have like a billion different questions, that I'm sure you've got all figured out. It's all kind of boiled down to just like, how is this going to work? Like, one example that popped into my head is, how is it going to work with, like, sports? Like, we've had a rule, I'm not sure it's still in effect.
Hasn't been implemented for at least four years since we went to Habits of Work.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's no academic eligibility.
Right.
It would be, you know, basically, we want students to be doing their job, without going to call back, so the Habits of Work thing, if they're handing in work, they're going to get help, they're doing their work, that might be a determinator, but we do not have an academic eligibility policy anymore.
All right, cool. So, how does this work with the sort of like a schedule that we have, and how classes work? Like, if, that wasn't very specific, like, if I'm taking a math class, and teacher teaches a unit, and I don't really do well at that, my experience with that has been the teacher just been sort of like pressing on, like, unit to unit to unit to unit, because they got a lot of material that they got to cover. How is that going to work with this? Are there, is it?
That's a great question. So, part of the rationale for moving to eight-year-long classes, it's the same teaching time, but it's spread out over a year. So, think about it now, right now, we are requiring students to master content, or reach proficiency by the Friday before Martin Luther King Day. That's the end of the first semester. And we know that students don't learn on the same pace, so we can build in opportunities for intervention. We've also made callback available for all students, and we've stretched learning out over a year. So, while the time is the same, students have actually longer to interact with the content, because they have like an extra day in between each class. And we can also, the question was always, well, when we move to proficiencies, what about kids who aren't proficient at the end of their first semester class? Do they have to take the class over, which sort of goes against everything we're trying to do anymore? No, we have time to build in intervention for those students. And it's not just passing the class, remember? It's multiple opportunities to hit those measures, those proficiency measures.
So, what happens if the student doesn't?
Then there will be proficiency recovery, just like we have credit recovery in the summer, when the student will have, you know, multiple opportunities. I mean, you know, in the end, we're still locked into, to a certain degree, a four-year high school completion, but that too is stretching a little bit in different places, and, you know, we're hoping that the state removes their emphasis on a four-year cohort rate. You know, that's one of the areas that we're rated on. So, yeah, I mean, the whole system is shifting.
Yeah.
Because the reason for this, Alder, is that too many kids were graduating from high school, not able to do higher-level work at colleges. More and more students had to take remedial classes and intervention classes to even meet the basic entrance examinations, or entrance levels for colleges. You shouldn't be able to graduate from high school and not be able to be accomplished and proficient in college.
I hope I'm not miscommunicating, because I think this is great.
And I hope you know I have a lot of passion for this.
Yeah, I think this is an absolutely great change, because personally, as a student, I've definitely been one of those ones who's been like, "I'm just going to skate by like just enough to like get through the class."
No skating by anymore.
Yeah, which is good for me as a learner, not so much me as a 15-year-old boy. So, what determines whether or not a student passes? Are we asking them to be, because you had the Jump Rope. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, Alder, Lori, I want to get Lori's questions, so can you, one more?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, because you see stuff every day, so.
All right, I'm just very curious.
It's good, it's good.
Snapshot of Jump Rope, and it had all those different, like, mini proficiencies, and like the big proficiency. Are we going to be asking students to be, like, add like a 3 in every single one of those proficiencies, or general overall in the class?
That's a great question. What I showed you has a little, the grade, we're working on grade size, which is what we're calling it. Right now, there's a lot of grade size at the middle level, the way that they've identified those. So, you'll be demonstrating proficiency in the class, but what will be in Jump Rope will probably be a little less, more general. You know, some of those things you saw there weren't exactly the broad competency or proficiency that was in that video, the one, the one, the Global Citizenship one about the garbage routes or something. We're working on that. Teachers were asked to identify six to eight content and transferable skill standards for each course or each year, so seventh-grade English or comped lit. So, that's what we'll be working towards.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you.
So, I've been hearing about proficiency-based grading.
Yes, you were on the BUHS board.
And I was on the BUHS board, that's right.
For a very long time.
For a very long time, that's right. And my concern and question is related to the preparation of the teachers. I know the students are struggling, and they'll probably get it, but how are the teachers doing? I keep hearing about it, but I don't, I saw that Jump Rope, are we going to have all the proficiencies for AP US History? Are we going to have it for, so by the time August comes?
They're already, they're mostly identified already, and you have them, you know, we have them written down. The teachers have been actually assessing them behind the scenes for almost two years now. If you, if you're a parent here, you click on Standards tab, and you can see where teachers have been assessing those already, but they're in development. And Lori, we're also, every single high school has like AP Bio, AP, you know, English, so those competen, we're not creating those from scratch, they're already there. The shift will really be, is how do you support students in meeting proficiencies? And so, it's that, it's the shift, it's not the shifting grading, it's, Sheila coined an analogy of, we just put a really nice built-in closet with really nice hangers, and drawers, and shelves, we're creating a beautiful structure on which to hang, you know, this system. And that system is, how do we educate our students? How do we make sure our students are able to do what it is, and show evidence of what it is we think they should know and be able to do? And so, it comes right down to really, really solid tier-one instruction. That's the instruction that every student gets in their regular classes. And that's where we want to get over this, you know, the contractor has left, and the closet's ready, and now we have to get back down to folding all the clothes. And so, I've been watching Marie Kondo a little bit. So, you know, that's where we really want to be focusing our efforts, and not on, which is clearly just a structural issue of the way we assess learning. That's not the case. The assessment should be the least of our worries, what grading system we use, it's our students having experience in their classes, so that they know and are able to do the stuff that we think is really important, so that they can leave our system and be successful, and have all the choices they need in their life. And that's what we really have to get back to. And I think that's always the question, that's not a new question, and that's what we'll be spending our time on. Does that make sense?
I am lacking the concrete feeling that, you know, anyway, I'll reserve, I just need, I'm concerned, and I hope the teachers are prepared, and are.
You know, we've been working on it, PD's been going on, we've been talking about it a lot, PD will continue.
We've been, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
George. I'm looking at a graphic of which states are further along in this process, and which are not, and.
States or schools?
States.
States, okay.
And Vermont's one of 17 states that appears to be furthest along in the process. I'm looking at, you know, California, and Texas, and Florida, and New York, or some of the biggest states, you know, haven't made this move yet, and I'm just wondering, you know, are we putting our kids at a disadvantage in terms of getting into college, for example, by being on the leading edge of this thing?
There's really no evidence of that, and I want you to keep in mind, every single high school grades its kids differently, produces a diff, there's no consistency across transcripts, or profiles, or grades. You know, the high school that I went to was A, B, C, D, E, schools in our region. Everybody has a different system, and colleges take those applications, and they basically throw out anything they, we try to tell them about it, and they re, so they recalculate what they see on the student's transcripts, based on what we tell them in their profile. So, because there's no consistency. You know, schools have weighted grades, non-weighted grades, four-point scale, five-point scale, 100-point scale, letter grades, you know, U-32 didn't have an F, they had an E. So, you know, it's, there's no consistency. So, and the proficiency-based transcript is, you know, the one that we have in draft right now, and the ones that the League of Innovative Schools Principals have been passing around and looking at, they look very, very similar. There is a descriptor that tells colleges exactly what they're looking for. There's also 75 schools that have signed agreements, that I think I've already sent to you, maybe, or I sent to somebody, about links, that they will absolutely not look scant at a proficiency-based transcript at all, that they will consider, they've signed agreements, and they're all in that link that I can send you. There's also a mastery-based consortium that has like handshake agreements with like 264 colleges, so.
And that mastery consortium is the top prep schools in the country.
Yes, yes.
So, they're all transitioning to this mastery transcript.
Yeah, schools in the state have signed on too. So, it's really not, I think that's a, I understand the fear, because I put kids through college too, but there's no evidence to suggest it, and many, many high schools have had college admissions officers come and speak to parents, and we've talked about doing the same thing here, and they will assure you, I guarantee you, we would never be doing this if we thought we were putting kids at a disadvantage.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, you can look at how our standard, the students that take standardized test scores in our school, how they are compared to the standardized test scores in other high schools in our state and in the country, and that's what we really need to make sure. We need to make sure that our kids' scores are as high as they can be, and right now, they're not. So, that's what we want to do. You know, we want people to know in colleges, doesn't matter what we show them in college application, we want a, we want college admissions officers to say, "Oh, that kid's run for Gen's, and for Gen's, they do it right," and that means something, and that's really what we're aiming for.
And you're saying, like SAT and ACT scores?
Yeah, I mean, if we build this system strong, and we are really making sure students are, you know, reading their individual classes, and knowing what, everything they're supposed to know, and can demonstrate it, those scores are going to go up.
I think we are really behind.
Yeah, that's fair.
Thank you. Yeah, go. All right, great, thank you very much, we appreciate that. So, we have now another education on our food service collaborative. Thank you.
I'll be quick, okay? I promise. Hi, everybody, my name's Kathy Alexander. For those of you who I have not met yet, I'm the director for the Addison Northwest Supervisory School District Food Service Program, as well as the Mount Abraham Unified School District Food Service Program. And I wanted to start by saying thank you for all your service, and these late nights, and hearing all this information crammed into your brains, really, really appreciate your efforts. Also, it was lovely to have lunch with one of our state legislators today, and be able to talk about school meals with her. And I want to introduce Laura Lovaca, who is the Assistant Director, and she spends a lot of times in your schools, and I asked her just to be here tonight, so that you could see who she was. Okay, so, let's get going. So, I was asked to come tonight to give you just a quick overview, oh, I'm sorry, it's not really that important, it's mostly for me, and there's some really good pictures. So, I was asked to give you an idea of numbers and finances, so that's at the top of the list, most important thing, maybe not the most important thing, and also quality, and what our accomplishments have been so far this year. It's only April, we still have time, but we'll, I'll review what we've done so far, and also, where do we go from here, and what's next in general for school meals? This is a lovely picture from Ferrisburg, well, a student at Ferrisburg, who said it better than I could ever say it, "Nutrition is our mission." So, that was awesome, good timing. So, first of all, some trends, so I like to just show you where we are with trends in our schools. As you know, we talked last time about the eligibility for free and reduced meals has a big impact on our program's well-being, because it's tied to federal funding, right? So, we have to look at that. That's kind of the first two columns on the left, and in general, what you should know is that, at the high school, that number actually went up this year, so this is a comparison, 2018 to 2019, but, and also, it went up a teeny little bit in Addison, but in the other two schools, Ferrisburg and the elementary school, that number of kids who are eligible for school meals, free school meals, went down. So, that does influence what happens in our program. You'll see that our breakfast participation, those are the next two columns, the first one is breakfast, and then lunch. At the Virgin's High School, we're kind of staying where we've been, it's around 23%, and for lunch, we've gone up about 2%, so we're at 59% participation as of right now at the Virgin's High School. Those are really good numbers for a high school. We see growth in other schools, and Addison's doing great in breakfast and lunch, we see lots of growth there in terms of participation. Ferrisburg's pretty much stayed the same, it's, there's a little drop in both breakfast and lunch at this date, but only by a percentage of, or two, and we're struggling a little bit in Virgin's. I guess I hate to say the word "even struggling," but we have seen a decline in everything, in eligibility and participation in breakfast and lunch. They sort of go hand in hand. When we see the eligibility numbers go down, we can also see those numbered, participation numbers go down, because it's harder for families to pay for school meals. So, it does make sense. But Laura and I have been meeting with the staff, we see a big jump, a big decline in breakfast, five-point. We see a big jump, a big decline in breakfast, five percent. We don't love to see that. So, um, we're spending time with the staff and trying to sort that out. It's not, it, you know, it's not a slam dunk necessarily. I hate when that happens. Okay, sorry. Really? So, um, participation factors beyond just the menu and what we put together for kids to eat. These are some things that do really affect those participation numbers that I just shared with you. So free and reduced eligibility, I said, that definitely affects, uh, participation trends. The schedule and the time kids have to eat. It's just, it's just real. It's reality. That will affect whether kids want to participate in our meals program. The cafeteria space and the atmosphere they eat in. Um, adult participation. Believe it or not, adults are setting examples for kids all across the board. And it's not any different with lunch. When we see high adult participation, we see high student participation. It's been a phenomenon that they're watching for twenty years. And it's just a real thing. Consistency in recipes and menus. So we want to make sure that we're not overreacting to, to kids not having meals at school and that we're demonstrating consistency and, um, and, and commitment to what we believe to be a great meal for kids. So that's something that definitely affects participation. Um, I think sometimes we see in this school that we're, Laura and I are working a little bit on maintaining that consistency because I know our staff, they don't, they're very, they want everyone to eat. And so sometimes they react a little too quickly to when kids aren't signing up for lunch and they change the menu or alter things because they want them to be really great. We're trying to, um, get that consistency back a little bit. Service lines can be a problem. And we have, um, addressed that in some schools by splitting lines. But sometimes the line's just too long and kids have to say, not waiting in line. I'm just going to bring my lunch. So we're addressing those kinds of things. And then there's marketing. Marketing is a big, is a big deal. So those are some of the factors that we are addressing on a regular basis. So as far as money numbers, the financial piece goes. Um, I think you all know this, but we have to generate revenue to meet our expenses. Um, and, uh, the revenue primarily comes from meals sold or the reimbursement that we get from meals. Um, our other sources of revenue are other meals. In addition to breakfast and lunch, we do, um, after-school program meals. We do summer meals. We do snacks, um, for some, uh, programs. And we're doing preschool breakfast. In the Mount Ave District, we're actually vending to preschools that are not, um, the kids are not in, in our buildings. Um, but we're taking the meals over to preschools. And that's definitely something we might want to think about here. We also, I put à la carte on there, to be honest with you. À la carte is a source of revenue, but it's not one that I put a lot of emphasis on because we are really much more interested in making sure kids are eating our meals and not buying extra things. So our à la carte sales is very low, um, intentionally, so. Uh, our other source of revenue is your contribution to student health and readiness to learn through, um, the, the contribution that you make to the budget. So that's how the, where the revenue comes from. I thought it would be interesting to do a little analysis of what our meals are costing. So I just looked at this as a snapshot right now. So you can sort of see where your money's going. Um, this is a little skewed because there's ways to cost meals that, when we do a menu, we cost all the meals, so we know what they're going to, what they're going to cost. Um, this is really just looking at the average, what's the money that we spent and how many meals did we, did we sell? Um, so it's, it's fair, but, um, it's, it's somewhat skewed. It's also March. I mean, it's also up to the end of March. And we don't spend as much money in April, May, and June. This is where we put the brakes on. We use a lot of our USDA foods, so things kind of even out. But nevertheless, I did want you to see this. This is where we're at. Um, our food costs are, include, are, are the cost of the meal includes labor, which in this case is about two dollars and sixty-three cents right now per meal. Uh, food and supplies is a dollar sixty-two. Other is nine cents. Others like equipment and software and things like that, pretty small, for a total of four dollars and thirty-four cents per meal. Okay, and that's what it looks like in a fancy little pie chart. So this is the point at which if I was running a restaurant for kids, I would say, okay, so my food cost is, my meal is costing four dollars and thirty-four cents. I'm going to charge six dollars for this meal. But you know we can't do that because we're in a school. And so we charge two dollars and eighty-five cents. So this is where the revenue comes from. So the meal is, we charge two dollars and eighty-five cents for families to pay for meals. We get reimbursements from USDA. And this is just to give you a picture of how a little bit complicated it is, but, you know, it's right here. So the, the reimbursement from USDA is a total of three thirty-seven. That's for free or reduced meals because the state does help us with the reduced meal price as well. We also get the reimbursement of thirty-seven cents for the paid meal. And the USDA food allocation needs to be considered in there as a source of income because instead, but instead of, uh, actual funding, we get food. But we add that into the, uh, the revenue for meals. So in total, we either get three dollars and forty-four cents or three dollars and fifty-nine cents, which means that for the free and reduced students who are eligible for free and reduced meals, we lose a little bit less money. We lose seventy-five cents a meal instead of students who are paid where we're losing about ninety cents a meal. And that's where you contribute. That's the contribution we're making, right there. So. Um, right now, in terms of our actual budget and looking at the budget and our expense-revenue ratios, we're doing pretty good. We are down by twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
Wow.
That's after you made a two-hundred-thousand-dollar contribution to the program, which is the money that I, that goes into the meals, the seventy-five cents per meal or the ninety cents per meal. And that's about twenty-three percent of the budget. So thank you. And we're using that money wisely. So we're in a good place. And again, we're going into April and May and June where we, our spending really, really, really slows down because we're using our inventory and winding down for the year. Um, we also still have lots of U, not lots, but we have USDA, um, foods to use up and that's basically free. So that's where we're at today, in terms of money. So you can, um, you may have questions about that, but I'm going to quickly run through the quality part because I'm very happy that you wanted to hear about that too. Because, um, for the seventy-five cents a meal or ninety cents a meal, you're getting really good quality food. Um, and what's in the meal we serve, not to be too sappy, but it's important to me that you know, there's a lot of care in those meals. There's a lot of smiles in those meals and there's a lot of commitment. So our staff are paying really close attention to what they're putting in the meals, how they're treating kids and all of that. And, and I, I also understand that they're part of an educational institution. They're part of a bigger picture. And they're not just slapping a meal together and throwing it down. We really are trying to do a lot more to be part of student education. Those are some fun examples. The emphasis in the meals is on fruits and vegetables, whole grains, fifty percent whole grain is all the time. Um, homemade, most of the time. We have a, you know, we do have some convenience foods that we're using because they give us the opportunity to wash local lettuce or chop up, um, zucchini, whatever. But we try to balance that. Local in season and service with a smile. That's what we're trying to work on. Speaking of local food, I think it's important to know that, um, we are down a little bit this year. I just did an analysis. We're, we're anticipating getting probably close to sixteen thousand dollars. Last year, we were at sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars spent in Addison County. When I talk about local, personally, I'm talking ultra-local. This does not count the Cabot yogurt cottage cheese, cheese, um, that, that we get from our distributor nor does it count other kinds of dairy products, um, some eggs that we get from the distributor locally. We actually get some produce locally from our distributor as well as, um, there's other things. I can't remember. But we, there are some local things. But this is really ultra-local. So sixteen thousand dollars back to Addison County. And that's the list of farmers, um, that we're, that we're working with. Laura actually is in charge of, um, helping us, um, make sure we do all our procurement correctly because we have procurement laws that we have to abide by, um, according to USDA. So she works with a lot of the farmers and, and our staff. So right now, we're at about seven point five percent of our food budget is spent locally. And that's as of today. So it probably will go up a little bit. So we're trying to balance a lot of things in our school kitchens. Efficiency and productivity. Making sure that labor cost you saw before is as tight as it can possibly be. That's a tricky one. Um, use of USDA foods and the DoD Fresh. Those are the sort of free foods that we get from USDA. We're trying to use those wisely. Um, convenience foods, I mentioned, local food and cost control. That's our balancing act. Um, if you want to see more about what we're serving every day, we are now, um, we have an Instagram account. It's Great School Meals, at Great School Meals. And every day, I'm posting a picture of a meal from one of our schools, often from two or three of our schools. And, um, so you can actually see the food on the tray. A lot of times, people are taking pictures, staff are taking pictures of a student tray that walks by. And they'll say, oh, my God, that looks great. Can I take a picture? And you can see it every day. It's been really fun. So what we're taking pride in is, um, especially, our after-school meals programs in both Virdens Elementary School and Virdens High School are really, really successful programs. Plus, they're bringing in revenue. Um, quite, the, the reimbursement rate for those was not included in that, um, chart that I gave you because it gets a little complicated when you add that. But it's a little bit higher than our regular lunch reimbursement rate. So we are, and we include all the work to do that within the workday. So it's a very profitable program and can really help us with our bottom line. Um, so it's about eighty-one meals a day right now. That's a good, that's going well. Our summer meals program, we are gearing up for summer now. Our summer meals program, also free to all students, is also profitable. Um, and we're planning for two thousand nineteen. Last year, we had this amazing site. It was our grill site at the Virdens Pool. Turned out to be sort of this little community hub. It was really, really great. So we're hoping to do that again. And we're going to be in six other sites. I think we're working on, uh, setting that up with the state right now. Staff training's a big emphasis this year. We did, we had a big initiative this year to work with our staff on managing food allergies because we really need to get a handle on that. So we do, we've done a lot of training with our staff about food allergies. Um, and we are actually, Laura and I are working with school nurses in this district, the Mount Ave District and Addison Central to actually come together and figure out, um, what some standards are for addressing food allergies in schools. So we're feeling very proud of that work right now. Um, we did some work with UVM dieticians around nutrition with our staff. Um, we worked on controlling food costs, kitchen safety. We just had first aid and CPR. Um, we had Visbit come in. Uh, Laura is our food safety, she is a food safety trainer now. So she actually can administer the food safety tests. Um, and all of our staff are certified at this point in time. So that's really good. Other stuff that we do. Um, I think Virdens High School deserves a shout-out for having been pretty much transformed. Would you agree with that? That's a pretty solid program at this point in time. They're doing really, really great work. We've gotten a lot of great feedback from, um, all of the staff and kids. Other shout-outs I wanted to make is we, I, I invited all of our schools to embrace National School, National Nutrition Month in March. And so everybody did something. Everybody did some nutrition thing within the school as much as they could. You can see at this school, they did a whole thing on sugar and how much sugar is in foods. They did a bean counting thing. There were Jeopardy games all over. Um, there was nutrition trivia at both high schools, which was really successful. Lots of kids participated in that. We were thrilled. And they got prizes at the high school for that. So lots going on. Um, other little shout-outs, we had a, that was, those were some really cool artwork from the, that month as well. Breakfast programs, like the Addison Breakfast Program is really great. Um, staff just dressing up and doing fun stuff for Valentine's Day. Kids participating in helping us make serving lines go smoothly, that kind of thing. So, um, in closing, for goals for two thousand nineteen and twenty, we want to work on our free and reduced applications. It's something we always worry about. Are we getting those applications? So kind of the next frontier for us is to work on having online applications. We have the capability through our software programs. So we're going to try to roll out, um, how to get those applications to families online and then get them back quicker because that's something we struggle with, I think. I don't know. Um, we're going to focus on breakfast participation, particularly in the high school and the elementary school in Virdens, having some ideas about new service models. Um, I'm interested also in developing some district-wide projects that we can really sink our teeth into. I have a couple of ideas. But they have to do with just starting to really encourage kids to learn to taste food. Um, and, and talking also about reduction of waste as part of, um, more of an educational experience within the cafeterias. We're really trying to focus next year on local and sustainable food systems in schools. We may look at some farm-to-school grants again. We've gotten them at small schools in the, in our districts as schools. But we may look at a bigger project to do that here. And that's the big thing. Thank you for mentioning it, Ruth. Um, you know, I do, all of this is a lot of work to keep coordinating. And I do want to say that there's a level at which we need to acknowledge that coming to school and having two meals is kind of part of the deal for kids. Like, they don't have a whole lot of choice. And that's becoming harder and harder to families to provide that. And so we do need to have these conversations about universal school meals. It's happening all over the state. Um, there's, it's, it's a conversation. I say to people now, how about universal school meals? And they don't look at me like I'm talking about going on a trip to the moon. They say, oh, yeah, that means everybody eats, right? Yeah, everybody eats for free. It's just there. It's part of our day. So it's going to be the next conversation. Um, and I know it's challenging, but as Ruth and I were talking about today, it may take little steps to get there, but it's a collaborative effort. And maybe it looks like, um, some help with, with local food. Maybe it looks like just free breakfast. I, I don't know. But we got to start thinking along those lines. And I do understand you have so many other things to think about, spend money on. But here's another one. We do know, by the way, universal school meals, there have been a couple of schools in, not a couple, there's forty-three schools doing universal school meals in Vermont. And, uh, UVM just did a study in those schools. It's increasing participation in the school meals program, which is kind of obvious. But it's also reducing bullying because there's no stigma, right? There's, I mean, we, we try not to have stigma, but it's there. It increases attention to learning, eliminates the need for us to spend time chasing money from families who do not have it. It's the worst part of my job. And Laura and I have to do it, um, with some regularity. It simplifies menu planning and staffing because we are not acting like restaurants and trying to be, you know, Chipotle and whatever, Subway and all the other places. We're really just providing a healthy, wonderful, delicious, local meal without killing ourselves to compete. Um, it frees up local, frees up money for local purchasing and it creates community in schools because meals, food, it creates community. So it's the next frontier. We'll talk more about it. And let's talk about it over lunch. And let's talk about it over lunch. We'd like to invite you all to come have lunch with us and just see what we're doing. And that's it. Those are, that's everybody, two districts. Questions?
George.
Two, two questions about milk.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that we don't buy locally because of packaging issue and is skim milk a requirement?
Yeah. Skim milk is a requirement. It's a US, a federal requirement is that we serve skim milk. One, it has to be a choice. I, I, we feel very much the same way. I think you probably do. But that's part of it. And also our flavored milk has to be one percent.
So flavored milk to be one percent, but regular milk?
We have to have skim milk as an option. We can, we also serve one percent white milk as well, but our, our, we have to have skim milk as one of the options. You have to offer two options of fat content. And the flavored milk actually has to be skim.
This is an issue that I'm trying to tackle. I actually have a whole milk bill in the legislature. It probably won't go anywhere because it's, it is a federal requirement because of the calorie restrictions. But I also have talked to, I just saw Congressman Welch last week and talked to him about it. And our committee, the Senate Agriculture Committee, and I believe the House Agriculture Committee have written letters to our congressional delegation on this very issue because it's not only an issue, especially for younger kids, the higher fat content in, in whole milk or even two percent milk is better than skim milk. It also tastes a lot better, but it's also an issue for our local dairy farmers. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm on it and I'm doing what I can, but thank you for that.
Yeah, and we don't have, it's the packaging thing. I mean, when I was at Ferrisburg, we had Monument Farms milk for years and years and years and then they couldn't, they had to replace their, their machine that put it into the cartons for kids and they couldn't afford it. It was a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, I remember that, that when they came to us and said, "We're not replacing the machine." And so we had to stop.
And I've served bulk milk in schools before and part of the issue with the packaging is that the requirement is that they have to take eight ounces, right? And so it's really difficult to manage a milk station where you're ensuring every student is taking that eight ounces. It's a crazy rule, but it's the rule and it's why it's a carton.
In order to get that three dollars and ninety-seven cents, we have to, these are all the, some of the rules and they're not all great. But yeah, we share those concerns. Yeah.
Do you pre-reduce that you're going to put online? Are you going to put a link to that on our website?
Yeah, if, as soon as we figure out how to make that happen with our POS systems and our, yes, absolutely, there would be links. I mean, that's the idea is to make it more accessible, the application and, and maybe more private, you know? That could really add to that.
Would it also go out at the beginning of the year?
Yeah.
In the packet of seventy-five different things?
We would, we would still send, I, I would advocate for continuing to send paper copies, but also having that as an option. And we could actually send, if it's electronic, we can send it on a monthly basis because this is, you can apply anytime. There's no date. You can apply any, at any time. You can apply on the last day of school. So, yeah.
There was a little bit of mention of waste. Is there any issues around comp, the composting rules or anything, or that's all worked out?
Um, I don't know. Is there a issue?
Isn't there going to be mandated composting?
Oh, yeah, there is going to be mandated composting. I think a lot of our schools are dealing with that really well and working with the facilities department to start to address that in different ways. I think at here, they're, they've been working with Casella for a while to have compost actually picked up and eventually we'll have to work. I think Casella has done that to help us to figure out how to do that in all the schools. Some schools are composting on their own with varying levels of success, but Ferrisburg has been the flagship composting school for so many years. I think one of our emphasis should be continuing to help students and everybody compost, but also to start thinking about reducing waste by eating food. It's kind of. And teaching kids about that.
Isn't that kind of radical?
Why they might want to do that.
It's radical.
Isn't that kind of radical?
It's radical, I know, I know. So that's kind of part of, um, initiative that I want to start talking about, that food is there to learn to like and that we can reduce waste by eating it. So, we'll see.
Thank you.
I just want to give a plug. The food isn't just good for cafeteria food. The food is really, really good. Like I'm buying lunch like three times a week now. I haven't bought school lunch in my entire time being there. Is that good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's the same feedback I get at home, too.
We're happy to hear this. Thank you.
I even bring it home.
No, I didn't mean, I meant for my child about the school lunches, not about my.
I didn't quite get what you're talking about.
They, they do meal in a minute, like leftover food and they'll package it up. And at least once a week I bring that home instead of cooking and my, so my husband agrees. It's like native food.
Right.
Good. We're so happy to hear that.
Kathleen?
And I just wanted to comment as well that, you know, it's my, my first year here, but I made some pretty original requests and had conversations with both these ladies and asked for things like on Dr. Seuss's birthday, if you know any dance, can you make green eggs and ham? Like can we, you know, can we connect to what's going on for that week? They're really part of our school culture in terms of serving and communicating with kids. They know kids' names. You know, they, they know who needs what and, um, yeah, I just, I really appreciate it. I also eat hot lunch frequently. And I just, I appreciate how much of part of the school, they don't just come and serve lunch and leave. Like they're part of the school community and really open to supporting whatever it is we're doing with curriculums or themes or special events and just part of the woven in fabric and I really appreciate that, so.
That's cool. Thank you. We'd like to do more of that in all the schools, so helping our staff just be really, everybody be really open to that perspective. Yeah, but we have done a bunch of things.
You have done. We are, I didn't know they had Instagram, but on our parent Facebook page, you will occasionally see at lunch, especially if there's a special Valentine's Day, they made little hearts and put them in the soup and everything on the tray was red and it's a fun thing. So there's a few on our parent page if you want to peek. But now they have Instagram, I'll have to take them and send them to you.
Yeah, please like us on Instagram.
Great. Anything else for Kathy?
So much for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, well, we're just a little behind time. Just a tad, sorry. Okay, moving on to our reports. So superintendent's report.
So I'll be brief. Continuous Improvement Plan, more to come in May. So Sue had asked that I indicate what is included in a continuous improvement plan, so I, I gave some overview information and when we come back to the May twentieth meeting, I'll have our draft plan for your, in its entirety for you, so. We also have the One District One book going on right now at the elementary schools. You've probably been hearing about that, if not reading it yourselves at home.
It's a good book.
Very, uh, great effort led by our literacy leaders. And then hiring a ton of people. So in addition to Holly, who is included in my report, you have an overview of four other staff members. Kendra Chris, how do you say her last name? Christiana, coming from U thirty-two. Brian Johnson, who actually did his student teaching here a couple of years ago, coming back. He's been at Oxbow High School this year. Michael Fetters, who's been working for us on a one-year contract. We've hired him into one of our permanent positions. And then Julie Cuziano?
Cuzno.
Cuzno, sorry, uh, coming to us from the Christian School. She's been a pre-K, K teacher. She'll be our art instructor here with your approval. So I don't know if you have any questions about that.
Any questions for Sheila? Okay-dokey, thank you. And Elizabeth's report.
So I don't have anything additional as far as my actual report. I was pretty self-explanatory. I think about every little subject. I think I had a more brief report, but a lot of data in there and just little snippets. The only thing I want to bring up is that most of these items that are noted in my report are also action items. So one of the items is our, uh, it's called the Non-Corporate Resolution for the Berry Scholarship. This is one scholarship left that we discovered was still using an old federal EIN from the high school and was not transitioned over to the district. And there was some conversations around how that scholarship was being administered that was holding up the process. So we believe we've worked that all out and we now have the paperwork to transition it over to the EIN number. And so I have that here tonight as an action item and then the chair has to sign that document. The second thing is our audit bid that we did. We had a small committee meet and we did not receive, we had two things to open. We discovered as we were going through them, we didn't dare open one particular envelope because it didn't have any notation as to whether or not it was a refusal to bid or whether it was an actual bid. So we waited till the bid to open that one. As it turned out, that was a decline. So we actually only got one bid on time for our meeting at two o'clock that particular day. And it was RHR Smith, who we are currently being audited by. We did receive a delayed bid proposal. It was about ten minutes after we went into our meeting. Of course, we didn't see it until I got back to my desk and then into my email. I did review it anyway and send it to the, the people who met just to make sure that everybody understood it did come in. It was a higher cost and not inclusive of our single audit in the same manner that this particular bid was. And the last thing is the acceptance that we just added to the action items for the Women of Wisdom donating funds to our different elementary school.
Excellent. Any questions for Elizabeth?
I don't know. Do you want me to share the dollar amount of the bid on the audit?
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to share the dollar amount of the bid on the audit or do you want to wait till the action item?
Oh, share it now. Don't keep us in suspense.
It's, um, RHR Smith bid thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for each of the three years, not increasing the rate for three years on the bid. We also had the option to renew that bid for up to two years, which is what we requested just in case there wasn't a lot of other organizations out there wanting to do our audits. That does include our single audit, which we had to clarify when I first, when we met. We didn't know if it included the single audit or not. It does and I verified that.
That sounds reasonable.
It's lower than what we're paying now.
But, because they've already done all the hard work.
Right.
Well, part of my understanding is there was a conversation where that's definitely true, that we were in consolidation mode and even in the last year that they audited us, they still had to do a little bit of closeout in order to close out those five remaining entities. And so this year will be the first year that we don't have closeout of old entities. We just have the one audit plus your single audit, which is your federal funding audit that you have to do because you received more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funding in a year.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Elizabeth? Okey-dokey. Principals' reports. Wow, there's a lot of really good stuff going on.
............................................................................................................
Matt, did you want to say something?
I have an oral addition to my report, if that's okay?
Yes.
Is it okay if I just say it?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm reading from a press release that we got over the weekend. Virgin's teacher nominated for the McGregor Teaching Award. Mr. Joshua Brooks, a teacher at Virgin's Union Elementary School in Virgin's Vermont, was nominated for the Hannah A. Liz McGregor Teacher of the Year History Teacher Award. The McGregor Teacher of the Year Award is sponsored by the James F. Harris in honor of his sister and is awarded to one middle and one high school teacher annually. Each of the fifty-seven National History Day affiliates may nominate one middle and high school teacher. Each for this award, Mr. Brooks is the junior division nominee from Vermont. The two five thousand dollar awards are presented to teachers who demonstrate a commitment to engaging students in historical learning through innovative use of primary sources, implementation of active learning strategies to foster historical thinking skills and participation in the National, National History Day contest. Teachers are one of the greatest resources children have to develop the skills necessary to become critical thinkers, said National History Day Executive Director, Dr. Kathy Gorn. The nominees for the McGregor Award show in a dedication to teaching that goes beyond the classroom. I congratulate Mr. Brooks on his nomination.
Wonderful.
Furthermore, I consulted with Ms. Coffey at the high school to go over the students who won awards this weekend at History Day. It's a pretty long list and I'll try and read it quicker than that. So the Deborah Pickman Clifford Vermont Women's History Prize was given to Nora Nelson and Maria Usgrove of Ferrisburg Central School for their exhibit, A New People Who Had Nothing in Great Depression in Vermont. The George F. Edmund Memorial Prize was awarded to Claire Clark, Sophia Johnson, Mia Kachuky and Jane Williams of Virgin's Union Elementary School for their documentary, Finding Happiness Again: A Story of Vermont Refugees. The Labor History Prize was given to Samantha Colvin and Kamari Collins of the high school for their exhibit, Child Liberalized from the Mills: From Tragedy to Triumph. Third place in the junior division group performance, Lila Carr and Natalie Jackman of the high school for their performance, Up from Sinclair: How One Man Unpacked the Meatpacking Industry. Second place junior division individual documentary, Maggie Amerson of Ferrisburg Central School for her documentary, The Pirate Queen: The Story of Ching Shi. First place senior division group exhibit, Jarrett Mosey and Adam Clark from the high school, Fifty-fourth Massachusetts. So congrats to all.
Wow, that's great. And they had a lot of students participate, too. Oh, and thank you for your advocating for students with mental health needs.
My pleasure. I go April nineteenth to participate in that process. It's both professionally and personally important to me.
Good.
Thank you.
Anything else for the principals?
Just like, um, one of the comments that you wrote, Matt, about talking with people about the use of our facilities, you wrote that in a paragraph? That you are in conversations with people about the use of our facilities? And I, I mean, I don't want to talk about it much more right now because it's so late, but I, I want to know what the board can do as advocates or at least enter into conversations with the people who are, the community who's using our school facilities. We do have a policy about this, whether our policy does what we need it to do. So just as a, how can we help or how can we learn more or whatever else, but let's not talk about it anymore. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And a written student report. Thank you very much. That was wonderful.
Only one thing I want to emphasize is the climate walk that's happening tomorrow. Me and another student, Marley Hunt, um, working really hard and administration and the staff at the high school has been super supportive in, um, allowing us to, to do this in the first place and, um, helping us figure out like where to get the money to pay for the bus and like what we, what things we need to ensure that students are able to go. It's just been, um, really great example of like everyone in the school, um, like people from every like part of the school working together to, to make something work. Thanks, Miss Taylor.
I don't know, counting Walden kids, probably twenty-five other kids sign up? Is that about right?
Yeah.
That's great.
Lee and I went to look this morning at the list.
Yeah.
Well, we hope for dry weather. It's a climate walk.
They're going to walk from Middle Set, Middle Set.
Yeah, Redhead.
To, Redhead to the State House. It's about eight miles on the one hundred.
It's the last day of like a five-day.
Yeah, it's been this whole like five-day walk that's like a total of fifty-three miles and, um, some students went to it on Friday, too, but we're going tomorrow.
Cool. Have fun. Stay warm and dry.
Hopefully.
Okay. Any questions, Roland? Okay. So board reports. I did not write anything, but I do have one thing to say. We have staff put out to the students to see if anyone else was interested in joining Alder as a representative to the board and we did get three letters of interest from three more students. So I guess my question to everyone is, shall we let them all join or what, how do we want to, how would we like to handle that?
From different grades or different?
Uh, so I believe there's two sophomores and one freshman.
So there'll be two, a senior, two juniors and a sophomore next year.
Is what they would, including Alder. We're not going to kick him off. He's doing a good job.
We used to have two reps at the high school. I mean, I don't know what, how, how do you, I'm wondering how you feel like, could you use someone else to help?
Dilute your power.
I'm just sort of like interested in how it would work. Would we have like four different student reports, would we all work together on one and just like cover different areas? But yeah. You got a plan going on, okay.
Also, the city council had a rec committee that formed and we were going to have a student come on and four students asked to join and we accepted all four of them, giving them two votes. And that also allowed the flexibility of the fact that student lives are chaotic. And some weeks, they weren't going to be able to make it because they were on a tournament and that's, so that way there was always a student voice available, even if not all four of them were.
Right. And of course, the way our articles are written, there's no student vote, but we would, hopefully with four, be guaranteed to have some voice. Although, we've had really good attendance from the one that we have, so I, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, I just thought.
I mean, I'd be in support of as many students that want to sit up here with us every month. I mean, that's, that's amazing that that many students want to be here.
I know, yeah, that's what I thought.
And I think we should encourage as much student voice as we can.
I agree.
I agree.
And personally, I'm also kind of limited in my perspective, being at Walden and not being in the school, engaging with a lot of the sort of like day-to-day experience. I think like that sort of different perspective would definitely be valuable.
Right, and also the ability to maybe bring the information back to the student body as well, if there's more, more of you.
Yeah, and having it make my life a little easier.
So yes, good, okay. Congratulations, should we name them then?
No, they don't know.
They don't know that they wrote letters?
They don't even know they submitted letters.
Oh, okay.
I'd love to be able to.
You want to do that, okay, sounds good.
So would this then be an annual thing? Or are we, because in the past, sorry, I'm a little slow here, I'm foggy. In the past, it was, we'd had a junior and a senior and so there was kind of a apprenticeship and then a rotation.
Right, so when I, when I solicited reps last year, only Walden, only Alder volunteered. So, and I had done it a couple of times, you know, it's kind of a cyclical thing, I'm sure. So I went, I went a year younger, so I addressed it to the, this grade, this year's ninth grade class, thinking maybe we're, maybe we're targeting, our kids are already getting busy and, and you know, I'd like to, I'd like to build capacity in our, in our students to have voice. And this seemed like a good way to do it.
So I guess, but do we envision that, say that, so the student who will be a sophomore, do we envision that that student would stay through the three years then, or?
Generally, that's what we've done, but sometimes they drop out.
Well, right, I mean, we're not going to force them, obviously.
I'd like a sophomore, ideally a sophomore, junior, and a senior. And, but we got two, two juniors for next year and, you know, I don't want to pick.
Okay.
We don't either.
We don't either, sounds good. Anything from Hanford Career Center?
No, the board meeting's Wednesday, so I have nothing to report.
Anything from VSB?
No, it's Wednesday.
Okay, I am trying to like take off the board reports that aren't applicable, but sometimes I make mistakes and then I don't know, so forgive me. Facilities.
I put up a, I sent in a report late, because we had a meeting on Friday. There are two things on that, if you have a chance to look at it. One is the thing that George Lawrence brought up earlier, which is about the need to improve our wastewater pond, or stormwater pond, or whatever it's called right now, stormwater pond. I think at some point, we are, we, the facilities committee will come back to you and ask you to approve for the Addison County Regional Planning Commission to apply for a grant for 100% design, after which we can apply for a grant to get the whole thing constructed. But the key date is 2023, when we have to have this done by. That we need to be in compliance by 2023. So this isn't a rush, but it, but it's something that we need, that we need to pay attention to and so the facilities committee is paying attention to it.
Thank you.
The other thing, and this is, I just want to draw your attention to it, George Lawrence, put together how much we've saved as a result of the upgrades and he's got an awesome graph on there, which shows the 43% drop in electrical usage and we've, we've saved a lot of money. So please.
Forty-three percent just at the high school.
Just at the high school.
Right.
So heating fuel, cost savings, heating reduction, almost $70,000, propane cost eliminated, $17,000. So we're looking at about $86,000 that we've saved.
In fuel.
In fuel, in fuel.
Say that again.
Eighty-six thousand dollars, eight hundred, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars in fuel in the last year.
To be clear, that's, that's my estimate, I mean, you know, it's still pretty darn cold, so it may end up a little bit lower than that because it was based on a heating, okay, or put another way, if we were to use the same amount of BTUs as was used last year, the savings would be eighty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. But if this is a colder winter, it might not be quite that much.
But we've saved a lot of money.
Yeah, we're saving a bunch.
Which is great, so that's all.
And saving electrical too, that's just the fuel, we're also saving in electricity, yes?
Yes, electricity, there are additional savings, as shown on the graph. Pretty much all, well, three out of the four buildings are using less electricity overall. Ferrisburg is the one exception. And my estimate for total electric savings so far is about $24,600.
Nice.
And it's, I didn't want to try and make a prediction just because I'm not sure, you know, I'm assuming that solar array will continue to have a more and more of an impact at the high school. You know, hopefully to the point of getting close to maybe producing as much as we use, at least for the summertime. But it's a little tricky because it's, its capacity is capped as to how much it can feed back onto the grid and that sort of thing, so.
Right, right. That's great, thank you, I'd love to see that. Thank you, okay, negotiations.
We have an action item later on, but we have concluded, we have concluded an agreement with the support staff. So it's just dotting i's and crossing t's, we'll ask you to take action on approving that.
Do we want to talk about specifics now, or add the action item?
Whatever anybody wants to ask, there was a copy of the agreement that was in your agenda.
So there were a lot of language changes really, and then 80 cent per hour increase for all support staff, which comes out to 3% new money and a change in the number of personal days to be more in alignment with neighboring districts. Closer.
Getting there.
All right, policy?
I wrote, we're going to meet on the 29th and I wrote what we're going to meet about, so check it out. And if you have something to offer about any of those things, let me know. Okay? Okay.
Strategic planning?
No, I mean, it's up there.
It's all there, yep.
And it's just that, we meet again on the 17th.
We meet again, we're still talking about goal areas and how we might link in with the continuous improvement plan. All right.
So thank you for informing us about the continuous improvement plan, because that's helpful for me at least to understand.
All right, we are on action items.
I, I move that we approve the minutes of March 18th, 2019, and March 28th, 2019.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or abstaining? Okay, bills and directors' orders?
Keith, do you want to? Or would you like me?
Someone?
I'm going to let you feel this.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to accept the, did you say yes you were, or you wouldn't?
No, it's all yours, Lori.
Okay, good, thanks. Keith and I reviewed the bills today. And we reviewed the GMP bill for the high school and it was half what it usually is. I mean, I've been reviewing the electric bills for VUHS and I've looked at eight, $9,000 monthly bills. This was 4,400 bucks. It was amazing. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills and directors' orders for accounts payable in the amount of $869,322.42. Payroll for $1,269,646.34. And the student accounts for $43,603.44.
Is there a second?
Second.
John, John seconded.
Okay.
Is there anything we should know about?
It was great to go over stuff with Keith. I think he learned a lot.
He's ready to go, yep. Cool.
It was, and I really appreciate your, his being there.
Awesome, thank you.
And the business office is doing amazing work.
Thank you.
And I suspect that the reason that we got a reasonable cost on that audit is in large part due to Elizabeth.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, all in favor of accepting those bills and directors' orders? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, approved non-corporate resolution for the Barry Scholarship.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I think Elizabeth filled us in on that, it's just something that was overlooked.
I have the top sheet on here and I'm going to pass this whole thing down. And I've tried to highlight where, so it just like name and title, date, and then name and title again and a signature from the Chair.
So, that's all just me?
Yep, just you.
I have, I have a question, related to reviewing bills. When we make scholarship checks, do they go through the AP?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Accepting the proposal for the Audit Service.
So moved.
Second.
The amount in the Any more discussion?
It's three years, at the same rate.
Yeah, per year.
Per year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we're all very happy for that, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, next item is appoint director from Ferrisburg.
We moved that down.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Authorize superintendent to submit proposals, accept grants, and act as administrator of federal and state programs on behalf of ANWSD.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have to do this every year?
We do.
Okay.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Assign members to Community Engagement Committee. Who's interested? Anybody else?
No.
What's that? Were you, did you want to stay on the committee? Oh, yes. I mean, no, no pressure, I just. No, 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 yes. Okay. I was reading something else. Thank you.
About Lori?
It is, yeah.
Your arm snaps as it breaks, that'll be a question.
Everything cracks. What's wrong? I can put it down.
I've got a move that we recommend Lori, Christina, and Keith.
And?
Not me.
Oh, you, I thought you were.
No, that was my hand.
Sure, really?
Go ahead and move before she
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Well, we also, we have more members than that actually, so we have, we're going to follow the Recreation Committee's guidelines here and have one faculty vote between three staff members of Margot Grace, Judy Elson, and Susan Olivera. One student vote between Ben Huston and Morgan
Hurlbert.
Hurlbert, thank you.
Thank you.
And one administrator vote, who is currently Beth Brody. And we have a community seat that's unfilled.
Yes, it was one of solicit people for.
Right.
I also wanted to mention that with Beth leaving, I asked Kathleen to serve as the admin designated for that committee and she's, I think, agreed. She's given me the head nod, so.
Okay. Shall we add her on now then? All right, I'm Kathleen. So the reason for doing, you know, there's not a lot of voting on the committee anyway, but just to make the quorum easier to.
Yeah, it's really about making the quorum easier to get than, we have never taken a vote on anything really.
So it would be four, four board members right now and faculty, student, admin, so we have seven, so quorum would be four. And if we get a community member. All right, so I just added to your motion, sorry.
Sounds good.
Is there a second, now that they're all?
Second.
Okay. Any conversation? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And of course, we can always add to that committee, if more folks are interested. Approving hiring recommendations.
I move that we approve the hiring recommendation of the superintendent of, who's, what's, I'm sorry, what's the name of the?
Holly Mugford.
Holly Mugford, as a elementary music teacher. Kendra Christiana as a high school math teacher. Brian Johnson is a high school life science teacher. Michael Fetters is a special ed teacher. And Julie Cusino as an elementary school art teacher.
Just, yeah.
As an elementary school art teacher.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any conversation? We're happy with all these people, I'm assuming, sounds good. All right.
A lot of hard work, thank you.
I know. Yeah, it was nice to read about the hiring committees too.
I really appreciate the bios, this is really helpful and appreciated, thank you.
All right, all in favor of those hires, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank goodness, okay, accept contributions from Women of Wisdom.
I'll move to accept the contributions from Women of Wisdom.
Was it in the amount of? Two thousand total?
There was three different elementary schools giving funds.
I think it was a thousand and two five hundreds.
Two thousand five hundred total.
Sorry?
Two thousand five hundred, in the amount of $2,500.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I know the organization behind Sweet Charity.
Yes, behind Sweet Charity and they're very giving and philanthropic, so, thank you. All right, all in favor of accepting these contributions, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so our last action item is to, oop, what?
Do we need to go into executive session?
Well, I don't know, our last action item is to appoint the director from Ferrisburg.
You're going to ratify the support staff agreement?
I'm sorry, how did I skip that?
I don't know.
I skipped that, I'm so sorry. I got out of order. Yes, I would like to ratify.
I move that we ratify the support staff agreement for 2019-20.
I'll second that.
I'm so sorry, I definitely did not mean to skip that one. Any conversation, questions?
Thank you to the Negotiations Committee for the huge amount of work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are very welcome from me, I don't know about the other two.
Thank you.
No questions?
Hopefully we can conclude the other one too.
Yeah, and it had to be, they have to be one-year agreements because of the state healthcare, state mandate, so.
So we start negotiating again in the fall.
Oh, yeah.
If not before then.
Yeah, we can't, just can't wait.
All right, so all in favor of ratifying that agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or abstaining? Yay. Okay, I'm sorry, now we're back to appointing a director for the Ferrisburg, appointing a director from Ferrisburg.
And we need to go into executive first.
Well, I think we need to make a determination if, if we should.
I think people agreed to that earlier.
Well, didn't the Select Board put a name forward?
So, yes, there were two folks who expressed interest, the Select Board has made a recommendation to us. The statute says that The statute says that we will appoint a director in consultation with the select board. Um, the select board interviewed the two candidates at their meeting on April 2nd. And they went into executive session. Came out of executive session and announced that the board would vote on a person to move forward, then consult with the district, ask for a roll call vote. Uh, there were four, there's five on there. There were four votes for Bill Clark. Uh, one vote for Chris Campbell, motion passed. Both Rick Evil and Clark Hinsdale cited reasons why they wished two positions were available. That is the recommendation from.
They wished, what did they wish for?
When was they like them both?
Oh. Oh, oh, I, okay.
Not that they're asking for another.
Okay, that's.
I mean, I don't know, that's the way I interpret that. That's from their minutes.
Okay.
So, um, so we have a recommendation from the select board. Okay.
So, I, so I guess. I'm not understanding exactly why we need to go into executive session.
Well, I'm looking for a motion, whether it's.
Oh, I move that we, um.
Accept the recommendation or motion to go into executive.
Then I'll, I'll, I'll move it that we approve this recommendation from, to appoint a director from Ferrisburg, which is Bill Clark.
It, was that a second?
That was a second, a very excited second.
A timid second. So, conversation?
I still think we need to talk about it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know. I don't understand exactly.
Can we, are we dropping number seven? Are we not going to executive together for the other part either?
No, we are having that executive.
Can we table this and do a quick jump to discussion and do the two executives together and come out and make a?
We, we, we could. I mean, this, we're in conversation on, on a motion at the moment, so if, if the board feels that there's a compelling reason that the board is going to be placed at disadvantage.
It says that, uh, V S A 313-3 says that you can go into exec- executive to discuss the appointment of, um, someone. So.
I don't know what George wants to talk about in executive and, but he's not gonna be able to say it unless we're an executive, so I think we should go into executive because we have a member who thinks it's important.
I can't rattle off the statute.
Well, Sheila just gave you the statute.
Yeah.
So, are, is there a motion on the table, on the floor, on the?
There's a.
Are we asking to table the motion that's on the floor?
Well, if we're gonna go into executive session, anyways, rather than go in, come out.
I'm in favor of doing that.
You would have to go in and come out and go back in.
Right, no, but, but rather than come back and do the discussion and let's.
Oh, you want to do the discussion now, too? Is that what you're proposing?
I was saying table this part and we'll do our two executives back to back at the end.
And then we'll come back and do it.
And then people can leave.
All right, is that the board's pleasure, George?
I, I second Mark's proposal.
I third it.
So, so how do we table a motion?
I rescind my motion.
No, well, we have to vote on tabling.
Yeah, one of the reasons why you can go in is if you're making a final determination to appoint someone.
Appointment of Ferrisburg director until we come out of executive session.
Is there a second? Second. All right, all in favor of tabling a motion?
Aye.
Do we table it? Do you want to table it? All right, any opposed?
We're tabling.
All right, discussion items. Teacher Appreciation Day is May 8th. I think we have learned that the P T Os have the food covered. We're not touching it. Not going there? No, it's not gonna happen. Um, but my question to all of you is, is anyone, uh, would anyone like to write a thank you note? Or some such thing, either from the whole board or from your town or your school to our staff or, uh, staff, Teacher Appreciation Day?
I'll write it with somebody.
From the whole board?
Yeah, I'll write it as somebody, I'll write it first and then I'll pass it to somebody.
You've got an editor right next to you.
All right.
Thank you. All right, you can look at the one I wrote last year.
You're so sweet.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I'll probably use that.
Okay, so that brings us to.
So there's no, there's no budget for this, right?
No, it's a thank you note.
That's why I was asking.
Piece of paper.
We don't even have footprints.
No budget, no money, thank you.
We do have to buy the note, but I think we didn't handle that.
You could do it by email.
No, we're gonna get a real card.
A real card.
It's gonna be handwritten, though. Well, yeah. I'll let you two figure that out. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, that brings us to executive session and what statute was that, 313 A1? No, A3?
Oh, which one, sorry?
Oh, I'm not, yes, 313 A3.
Right.
So, looking for a motion.
Someone? We can go to the library.
All right, we are going to the library. Thank you, everyone, for coming.